Good evening and welcome to the City Council Study Session of Tuesday, November 29, 2022. I have one item on the agenda, discussion regarding modifications to the engineering design criteria. Mr. Sturtsch.
Thank you very much, Mayor, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you about this. As you can see, this has been an ongoing process for a while, and we're at that point of ready to bring it to you and kind of get this wrapped up. I have Don Warwick here with me tonight of Friesen Nichols. They're the consultants that are helping us through this project, and we're going to kind of tag-team this tonight and kind of give you a little bit of background and bring you up to date with where we're at, and then finish with how we're going to actually complete this project here within the next few months. So, I want to start off a little bit of background. I know many of you weren't on council when this all started, so I want to take a few minutes. What we're really discussing here is two documents, the engineering design criteria and the standard specifications and contract drawings. These are fairly old documents. They were originally adopted by council in 1996, so if you're playing along at home, that's over 25-year-old document, which is pretty old for any technical document. And then, the last amendment to it was in July of 2006, and there were nine amendments in that timeframe. So, it's gotten a little old. We need to update it. This is a document I use every day. This is my version, and you can see it's tabbed and marked and colored and highlighted. I use this. It's on my desk almost all the time and usually open to something I'm trying to utilize in it to work with a developer or someone else or a community, someone in our community that needs some help. So, it's a highly-used document in public works and also in utilities. It governs a lot in that action, in that area also. So, an engineering design criteria, we're going to call that an EDC for short throughout this presentation. It just makes it a little bit easier. But basically, if you think about, if you go to IKEA and you buy that nice new bookshelf, you've got that set of directions, this is that set of directions. This is how a new developer or new engineer knows how to start to putting a plan set together that will meet our requirements for our public infrastructure. So, our roadways, our drainage, stormwater requirements, you got the sewer water. So, there's a lot that goes into this, and I just put up one sample page of it up here, and you can see there's math and equations and tables and words. It's a pretty technical document, but it's what we use as engineers. When I was still in the consulting world, the first thing I would do when I went into a new community is hope they had one of these. If they don't, it's a lot more complicated. And then, we also have the second book that I showed the cover of up there, which is the standard specifications and construction drawings. The standard specifications is kind of that legal contract documents. It's if we hire someone to do the work or somebody's doing the work, it sets out those rules and those basic needs and criteria for how to perform the work. It talks about fees. It talks about how much we're going to test and kind of some of those technical, more performance issues. And then, those construction drawings, this is a copy of a construction drawing. It's actually the detail for how to construct something. So, we have them for all the different, we have water and wastewater, we have storm sewer, we have streets. So, this is actually, these will go in the back on what we call a detail sheet, so that contractor out in the field knows exactly what we want built and how to do it. So, as you can see, these are really important documents when we're trying to create our public infrastructure. And one thing that it does for us as a staff is it gives us a consistent basis. We know what we're expecting from the developers and their engineers, but also, it gives us a consistent reply back to them. So, we're not making a decision based on a spur of the moment. We have a guidebook. We have a rulebook. We know where we're going, and we're not going to treat a new developer different than an old developer because we have guidelines here. Or, in a lot of cases, we don't wind up with 10 different kinds of inlets out there that cost us more to maintain because we can keep standard parts. So, you can see that there's a lot of benefit and a lot of use in this. And you can imagine since 2006, a lot of things have changed here in Norman. I've only been here for 10 years, and most of these have happened in that time. But we now have a water quality protection zone, and with that, we adopted a low-impact development manual. That manual is actually from the city of Wichita, Kansas. It's a good manual. I was actually talking to somebody at a national convention for public works, and they had worked on that manual, and their first comment to me was, "I hope you're not still using the original." And I'm like, "Well, I think we are." But that just shows you how quickly things move and changes we need to make. The Public Rights of Way Accessibility Guidelines, or PROWAG, have become the accepted best management practices in the right-of-way for how we treat Americans with disabilities, the ADA Act. So, that is new guidance, and we don't have that incorporated in our current documents. We now have a comprehensive transportation plan, which is a great document. It's guiding a lot of our decision-making, but that's not incorporated. We have a complete streets manual. There have been updates to stormwater modeling. Literally, the program that we list in this old original, I think, was done to be done on punch cards, and then it was updated to DOS, and now it's a full, actually, it's a very different program. But, and that's what everybody's using, but we needed to update that. We're using the most recent and best materials. There's new construction materials. Things have changed out there in the marketplace. An example is that pipe that's shown down there on the bottom. That's called HP pipe, is what we call it, high-performance pipe. It's a plastic pipe. It's really quick and easy to install. It's got gaskets in it. It's a great increase in the technology over what we've been using, and it's not in our documents. So, we had to give special variants every time somebody wanted to use it. We can incorporate rules on its use and when we can use it. And then, kind of another one is updated state permits. There's been upstate, updated OKR-10 and OKR-04 permits, which are the stormwater permits that we have to adhere to and that we're required to uphold, and we need those represented correctly in here so that our development community knows how to react to it and we can treat them fairly. So, we kind of got here on a long and winding road. In my time here, we've tried multiple times to begin doing an update of this or an amendment to it, and we really shouldn't have the staff time to be able to put into it. The harder we tried, the less we could get done because we needed to keep the balls rolling. We needed to keep all the plates rolling and juggling in the air. But the comprehensive transportation plan in 2014 recommended updating this. They recognized in the writing of that document that this was out of date and needed to be updated. In 2017, council went into a long discussion about incentivizing green building codes. It really had more to do with buildings, but it kept leaking over into stormwater and low-impact development and items that really are addressed in this manual. That went to CPTC for a few years, and a lot of good work was done there, and there was exploring incentive programs for green building codes, green building practices. Again, green infrastructure or low-impact development, those are really the same thing. They're really interchangeable terms there. And, you know, the parking, the parking changes we made recently kind of came out of all that discussion also. There was discussion out there that the manual was starting to get a little dust on it. We needed it updated. It was getting a little old, a little frayed. Then, in July 1 of 2019, we put that in as a budget item, and council approved it in the 2020 capital improvements program budget for us to begin this update, hiring an outside firm to be able to help us so we could do a more complete overlook of this entire program. And then, in February of 2020, council approved the contract with Friesen Nichols so that we could begin this work. So, it's been ongoing. It's been an interesting road so far, and we're ready to keep moving and get it wrapped up. So, some of the objectives that we had were kind of fleshed out in some of those early meetings. First off, update this 25-year-old manual. We had all those things that we've talked about, the WQPZ and all these items that weren't referred to. Get all these things together in one place. It was a little more common, a little more easier. It's really hard when you say, "Oh, well, you didn't realize you had to go to these two other documents in another area." So, we're bringing them all together as appendices in many cases. We decided that using somebody else's green infrastructure or green stormwater infrastructure manual maybe wasn't the best plan, and we've gone through and we've written a new one that we think is really well-done. My first read through it, I was really impressed. I was really happy with it. It met a lot of the concerns that we have currently. Also, we're incorporating that complete streets policy, traffic impact analysis guidelines, PROWAG. We're basically saying that that is our new standard for best management practices. We're bringing the WQPZ in by reference, and it'll be attached in the appendancy. Also, the whole EDC to comprehensive transportation plan. We were calling roads different things, so you'd go and it'd say major arterial, major urban arterial, and you'd go to the other one and it had a different name. And so, it was really hard to figure out what fit together if you weren't used to really working in Norman. A lot of time and effort was put into coming up with the approach for this. Basically, it's three phases. So, phase one is the diagnostic review and benchmarking. Going into phase two, which is where we are trying to get to the end of now, is the EDC and specification updates, and then phase three will be implementing this out there with our developers and our public. But one item that became very important and something we really wanted to concentrate on was staff and community engagement. This was too big of a project just being handled by interior staff. We wanted to reach out. So, early on, there was a staff advisory committee put together, and that was 10 staff members, and you can see there are from multiple departments, Parks and Rec, planning, public works, utilities. Legal now has added comments to this. So, we're really reaching out to all of the city staff to make sure that everybody's needs are met with this. And then, there was a stakeholder committee that was set up. And initially, for phase one, it was 25 members. We had developers, home builders, consultants, community members, contractors. So, we had a wide range of people that were able to come in and give us their opinion, and we could help with them, and they could make comments. But then, when we went to phase two, we expanded that out to 33 members. We just felt that more people needed to be added. We had some specific requests from some of our community members to add some people, and we honored that so that we could get the best representation we could, so we could get to the point we're at now, ready for public.
How many people out of the stakeholder committee, out of those 33 persons consistently came to the meetings?
A little over half.
Okay.
For consistently. But then, we had others that would float in and out. Again, a couple of people changed positions, weren't involved anymore. Some people were added, but I would say that we probably had a good half representation that was consistent throughout most of the project.
Could you break out what community members, what that group was, and then the feedback that led you to add some more and who those were?
Sure. So, we kind of went after people that had specific interests during this phase. As you'll see later, we're getting ready to do a public outreach where we want public comment, and we want our entire community to be involved in this. But at this phase, for example, past council member Bill Scanlon was on because he has some very specific concerns and ideas about stormwater. Bob Naren, a professor at OU, Amanda Naren. I don't have the complete list in front of me, but...
But would anybody from the ADA community have been on there, or was that the feedback you got and that's who you added going forward, or who did you add going forward?
Really, we just added more. Some people had some specific requests from people who were very familiar with subject matter, and we added those. We did not have anybody directly from the ADA community on this one, but the staff, our ADA technician was part of our staff advisory committee, and we have been very aware of that, and that's again why we're bringing the PROWAG into this at this time. Okay. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Don to kind of go through more of the project approach and then some of the highlights of changes we made and then kind of our next steps.
So, as Scott mentioned, phase one was an exercise in evaluating a lot of existing materials, so your current ordinances, the existing EDC documentation, policies that relate to development in the community, and also conducting stakeholder interviews. So, there were several stakeholder teams established within the city. So, in addition to the 10-member advisory committee, we also invited in people who were on maintenance crews, who look at construction in the field, people who do inspections, a variety of different representatives who are involved in all different aspects of the construction and infrastructure process. That also expanded to a community benchmarking effort, so what we wanted to understand there specifically for the sustainable or green stormwater element of the project was what are other communities doing and what do we need to align with to ensure that we're recommending best practices so that you get the best possible guidebook document. Some of the milestones related to the first phase of the project are shown here. I mentioned that document review phase, and I will also mention that we initiated this contract in February of 2020, and I think everyone knows what happened in March of 2020. We had a few challenges with regard to COVID, and that sort of slowed the project a little bit at the beginning. We picked back up mid-year and started conducting additional meetings. We had a stakeholder input activity, or meeting in June of that year of 2020. At that point in time, we were able to present the draft diagnostic report to a group of stakeholders and sort of give them time later in the process to absorb that. They had about a month to review it and provide feedback. Additional steps included the development of this green stormwater infrastructure element of the document. We also refer to that as the sustainable stormwater development, so you'll see a few different terms that are generally interchangeable. We broadened it to state sustainable stormwater because that's a bigger term. LID and green infrastructure all sort of fall under that umbrella, so it sort of encapsulates a lot of things. The community benchmarking element of the diagnostic was also performed sort of later in the process, and ultimately, the diagnostic report, which is about a 60-page document, was delivered to the city in January of '21. Related to the engagement activities specific to phase one, we did have, I mentioned, the stakeholder meeting in June of that year that was intended to provide an introduction to the project. There had been some email communications prior to that, but this was our first time getting everybody in a room to have a conversation, provide an overview of the report itself and how we were approaching it, and to basically start a question-and-answer conversation with the development community about the diagnostic report. The diagnostic report was a phase that was really established to give us a roadmap for creating the updates to all of the technical documents. And so, the report itself was drafted, and from December, well, basically all of the month of December in 2020, it was available for review and feedback. I mentioned it's about a 66-page document. The purpose of it is, of course, to provide that roadmap. It identifies issues that relate to the update and also proposes solutions to those issues so that we're ready to go in and start making the changes to the actual documents based upon the guidance in the diagnostic report. Every section of the existing EDC was evaluated and reviewed to inform the diagnostic report. So, January of '21, we sort of moved into phase two of the project, which is the actual update to the engineering design criteria, the specifications and the construction details. This also included a technical memo related to recommended code amendments. So, we, in addition to reviewing your technical documents, we also reviewed your zoning code, your subdivision regulations, your Center City Form-based code, and provided a technical memo that includes recommendations to help align those documents with the new guidance within the EDC. So, that was an element of this phase-two process. So, we drafted technical documents. We conducted the code review, went through a process of review and revisions, particularly with staff at that point, and then entered into a final review process. We had a larger meeting with the external stakeholders in October, beginning of October. At that point in time, we were able to provide the draft document. It is also, and I'll get to later in the presentation, show you that we've got a project website that also houses that information and provides opportunities for review and comment. So, all of those things have been conducted up to this point. It's been a huge undertaking at the staff level because it takes a lot of time for your staff to really understand, well, not for them to understand, but for them to review and to provide feedback. There's a lot of content in these documents, and this is something that they work with every day, but it's not necessarily something that they have the time to sort of sit aside and review and update and provide feedback on every day. So, we asked a lot of the staff, and they've been really super to work with and to provide us guidance and input. So, we're here in late '22, ready to conduct final activities related to adoption of these documents, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as we move forward. Phase two, engagement. We kicked this off in the spring of 2021. 19 stakeholders attended the kickoff meeting in May, and that is the time at which we extended that stakeholder community. So, there were requests of people in that meeting to add colleagues or people that they felt would be good contributors to the process, and so that was where that happened. We also basically assigned people committees, subcommittees, because there are a variety of different technical specialties within the engineering design criteria. There are, of course, streets, stormwater, water, sewer, and then the sustainable stormwater element, and we wanted people to join whichever subcommittee or multiple subcommittees they felt like they wanted to learn more about and participate more in. Some people were in all the committees. Some were in just one or two because that was their area of expertise. The subcommittees met over the course of a series of months, and there were varying different degrees of engagement, but everyone had the opportunity to see draft elements of the updated materials and provide feedback over the course of those various meetings and conversations. During this time, while we were working with the stakeholders, we were also working with staff to make sure that they were involved, that they knew where we were in the process. Staff was involved in all of the subcommittee meetings as well, so kind of tracking all through the various activities. Those committee meetings ranged between May of 2021 and June of 2022, so that's when we were also drafting this new or updated engineering design criteria document. Staff conducted a review from June to September, and then we distributed the updated documents to the stakeholders on September 29. And we conducted a stakeholder meeting, I mentioned, in October, October 6. At that point in time, basically September 29, we also opened up a project website and made that available to everyone. It houses the existing documents, the various policy documents and codes that we reviewed, as well as the draft update.
Is this a whiteboard kind of comment? That's what that is. Okay.
Yeah, and we're going to show that here in just a few minutes.
Just stick it in my head.
So, the next few slides will go through highlights from each of the different elements of the engineering design criteria document. So, highlights related to just the general document itself. The document was pretty aged. Scott mentioned it's 25-plus years old. It needed to be brushed up, the formatting and making sure that, and one thing that was not available in the existing document was hyperlinks between different referenced documents and different referenced sections. So, this is a document that will be easy to navigate and will allow for people to jump between different referenced sections without having to scroll through and kind of lose their place. So, it also brought all of the definitions from the various chapters into one consolidated section, and it updates the references to adopted codes, plans, and studies. Some highlights related to the waterline section. In this element, we really wanted to make sure that we were reflecting current practices. So, one thing that we recognized is that development practices have evolved in the 25 years since the adoption of the existing engineering design criteria, and your staff has evolved as well, and they have been accepting and allowing for best practices to be implemented because it just makes sense. They just haven't had the documentation to memorialize all of it and make sure it's consistent. So, a large part of this was to make sure that we were recognizing that and documenting current practices. It also recognized some of the installation related to subdivisions needed to be updated, again, to reflect current practices. Same thing with sanitary sewer. Location of lines relative to new developments was evaluated and updated, and also materials. As Scott mentioned, the pipe changes and some of the other materials that are used typically in modern construction needed to be referenced and updated. In the streets sections, we wanted to make sure that we were aligning the references and the street types to the comprehensive transportation plan. We reference and adopt as an appendix or recommend as an appendix the traffic study guidelines, also referred to as TIA's. Complete streets is referenced as well as PROWAG so that we're adopting the best practices for any activities that happen within the public right-of-way. In the stormwater section, there are new technologies being used for modeling practices. We wanted to make sure that that was referenced, also to use appropriate drainage equations so that everyone is consistently utilizing the same math to take care of drainage in and out of development sites and new pipe materials as well. Also, relative to stormwater, but on the quality side, there have been updates and new requirements relative to state permits, and so we wanted that to be documented and reflected in the updated EDC. What's referred to as the section or chapter 7,000 within the EDC is now called the Sustainable Stormwater Development Chapter. It did not exist before, so this is complete new content. This is what replaces the manual from Wichita that is currently utilized. It is a voluntary section of the document. So, one thing that's unique about section 7,000 is that developers are not mandated to utilize this. They're encouraged to. What we found was that developers are oftentimes utilizing low-impact development practices, but staff didn't have a standard set of guidelines or guidance to review what they were submitting and to allow those to be installed within public rights of way, within public properties. So, we wanted to make sure that that was taken care of so that when it is elected, that that's the approach that a developer wants to take. We have, you have now, in the update, the ability to review it for compliance with a standard set of guidelines, inspect it, and ensure that maintenance is taken care of for the longevity of the project.
Let me interrupt you one second, please, council member.
Is there a particular reason why it's a recommendation and not a mandate? Can you maybe describe why?
Yeah, and I think that that's been long debated. The question is, you know, what's the trade-off here? I think that at some point, you know, I think we want to get this adopted, and that may be a discussion for later. I also think that, you know, I think there's some opportunities for some incentivization of this program, but to try to get, I think that can become a rather lengthy and drawn-out discussion with a lot of different feelings and attitudes. If we at least can get the manual approved, then we can start looking at what those options are. But to make it mandatory becomes very difficult because there is many times added costs with the installation of these. I'm, we're seeing them more and more. People are doing them more voluntary. The other thing is that this is part of our WQPZ. You can reduce the width of that buffer zone by using these engineered designs, and this will replace what we have today with some more modern technology, some new ideas we'll be able to come into.
Okay. I appreciate you mentioning like incentivization and things like that because I think that's the route that we probably want to go with these things because I'm sure that all of these standards are things that we would really like to see implemented because... because they are kind of the top tier. And so I do respect that it can be challenging to get a document like this passed, but would like to see further discussion on how we utilize this moving forward.
And we fully intend to come back and start that discussion with council and see what seems most appropriate, and I think it'd also take more input from our development community.
Thanks.
Councilmember, great.
In line with that development, or input from the development community, did you hear from developers around this, like, they wanted information from us and we really couldn't point back to anything?
Well, in the past, we've been able to go back and utilize the Wichita manual, and so we were able to always go back to that. But things have changed a little bit since that manual started, and there have been some other situations where developers come to us with a new idea or a different proposal, and we've worked with them and found ways to, you know, to implement this. I think one of the most interesting ones is in our Center City Form-Based Code area. If they go over their 65%, they have to do something to treat that, what we call the first flush, the first one-inch of rain. And what they came up with was kind of a trench with a pipe from the downspouts, and that water would go into the trench and the gravel and have a chance to soak in, so it decreased, kind of created a detention in a way to get more of that water to not be going down into our storm drains. But that was something that was never addressed, and I don't know anybody, but we worked through it. We put together, we found some calculations so we could make sure it was being sized properly, and we worked with them to get that implemented, and it's become a pretty standard design in that area now.
So moving forward, something like that would be easy to point back to because we've done it and will be a part of this?
Right, and we always have the option. If something isn't working, we can amend it. We can make, we can write an amendment, we can work with the developers and the engineers and say, okay, that's not working, and we can amend it. We can bring it back to council, and you can adopt that amendment, and we can make changes. We can add to it. If there's a new technology that we see that we really want to implement, we can do that on a test basis with the variance protocols that we have in the document, and then say, we want to add this, and come up with that and write it in and put it in as an amendment at a later date.
So those stormwater control measures are, there are a variety of different types that are incorporated into section 7,000. There are large-scale and small-scale stormwater control measures. There are things like what you see here, anything from the utilization of porous pavement or a rain garden, which could be scalable depending upon the type and size of a development, up to a bio-retention basin or utilizing a manufactured system. And so there are a variety of these measures that are addressed within section 7,000 and give guidance as to how they, and in what circumstances they're most appropriately utilized.
And this section also helps you, helps us with the design of that. A rain garden, if you're gonna treat X amount of water, needs to be X size, it needs to have X parameters, so that we're not, you know, designing something that's going to just fail. It's gonna help us give a basis of evaluation.
And you mentioned the possibility of phasing this in or working from an optional scenario to something that becomes more mandatory. There are some guidance, there are some guidance in the technical memo that accompanies the engineering design criteria that will help to identify ways that you can incentivize and use good, you know, triggers to say, this is a good, appropriate application of these types of standards. All right. In the review, and this is what I basically just said, I skipped ahead, sorry. The guidance, we provided guidance, as I mentioned, for aligning the engineering design criteria with your development regulations. It includes the incentivization of the sustainable stormwater development, and one of the other things that we really wanted to do in that review was just identify places where you can remove barriers to utilizing these types of tools, where you have the option of using sustainable stormwater development techniques as opposed to traditional ones. We just wanted to make sure that you, oftentimes it's just adding the option of utilizing alternatives as opposed to only applying the concrete methods. So we wanted to identify the locations that were opportunities to make those adjustments. So you still wouldn't necessarily mandate the utilization of green stormwater, but you'd have, you'd have removed any of the barriers in your existing regulations so that a developer could make that choice without having to go through a variance process. All right, so what happens next? We are here, it's presenting this so that you all have a good understanding of what we're working on and where things are going. We are continuing to gather input. The stakeholder, the portal, which I'll show you on the website, has been available and has been distributed to our group of stakeholders and anyone who's asked for it. Since September 28th, it's been up and available. We are proposing to conduct a virtual community open house that will run approximately two weeks, beginning tomorrow through the 15th of December, where anyone in the community has information and can go in, log into the website, review documentation, and provide feedback. We're also, next week, proposing to conduct a hybrid virtual or hybrid online community open house, and that would basically be if someone didn't want to, the self-guided version, they chose to connect when Scott and I will be on a call and basically providing this type of presentation, so community members can call in or log in and ask questions. We'll make ourselves available for that on the 7th, and then in the evening on December 7th, which is next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow, we will conduct an in-person community open house meeting. That'll be in council chambers at 6 o'clock, and that will be, we're working with the communications officer to provide information to the community about all of these options where people can, you know, get access to this project and learn more about it. So the goal is to have this back in front of you in, at your January 10th meeting for adoption. We expect that we will turn off the public input mid-December and utilize those last couple of weeks of December to update materials, to reflect the information that we've heard and any adjustments that need to be made, so that we can present to you right at the beginning of the year, the full package of information, and have that ready for you to consider for adoption.
One second, please. Councilmember Lee.
Kind of off-topic, but with everything that she's talking about right here, if we could have something like that, that was staff-friendly, that we could do this process with some of the things for public input, for different things, I think that'd be helpful. I mean, because whatever, that sounds like a heck of a system setup. I don't know how easy that is to achieve where we would run there.
No, in two weeks.
But I mean, could it be used for other items as well? Okay, that's what I'm wondering. I didn't know if it was just contained to this.
We're gonna be using regular communication methods, probably Microsoft Teams as a platform for some of the communications and the calling elements, and then just a project website that can be, that will be connected to your city website.
And we'll show you a sample of the website here in a minute, but very is, it's a whiteboard, as you mentioned, Mayor, where you can go in and type in a comment, and they're all kind of up there, and I could go in and comment on your comment, and we can respond to it, and it kind of opens a dialogue, so.
Maybe we'll have a re.
Be careful what you wish for.
But, no, so with having this, it can be used for other purposes, not just this one.
We can always, we can look into systems, absolutely.
Okay, that's what I'm wondering.
The software system that we'll be using and that the project website sits on is a program called Social Pinpoint, and it allows for mapping exercises as well as just, you know, manual comment, feedback-type things, surveys. It's got a lot of functionality.
Thank you. Councilmember, sure.
I know you're not quite done, but since we had kind of a timeline up here, as we're thinking about, it's taken us 25 years to update this version, what is the recommendation moving forward for us to continue to update this in a more timely manner?
It should be a dynamic set of documents.
Yes, okay.
My goal would be that as a staff, we would have an annual review, and if there's changes we need to make, that we make those, and we do it more on an annual basis. And if we go through and there's no changes necessary, we don't have to, but, you know, that obviously does involve, you know, it's not just Public Works. Utilities has a huge play in this, and they've been a huge partner in this, but Parks and Rec Planning, and so we do need to reach out, and we need everybody to be aware of that, or, you know, and everybody paying attention. If there's a situation that's come up, that we had a problem with development that we couldn't address in here, that we need to change and address, we need to change and address it. Or if a community member, a developer or engineer says, this technology's changed, we want to try this new method, we need to look at that, we need to have that open towards a, like, it should be a dynamic, not static. It should never sit for 10 years.
Yeah, no, I mean, I definitely understand that, and I do appreciate that, like, doing it this way, and that since it's taken so long, this has been a much heavier lift than if we do it on a continual basis.
Absolutely.
So, you know, you're not looking at maybe every section every year, or, you know, you're only utilizing things based on feedback from, you know, the developer community or, you know, whatever is happening out in the field to make sure that we're up to speed. Because I can only imagine how difficult it is to work with a 25-year-old document, and not only for staff, but for the development community to understand, like, what are we asking of them? What are the standards? What are the practices? And then not having to go through the variance process, which can be lengthy and time-consuming and, you know, money, extra cost and things like that. So just, I'm really excited that this is moving forward.
Councilmember Torcarella.
If you ask my question, this is probably to the city manager, what part of this site and data collected is, falls under the provisions of the Open Records Act that can be foiled in the future by anybody?
I would think all of it.
All of it.
All of it.
I mean, we would have to retain the information. I mean, this program she's talking about, I'm assuming it's Freezing Nichols program that you use, so it wouldn't be housed on our website or anything.
We have a subscription to it, and then we would just provide the link so that it can be connected to your website.
But yeah, it would all be open record.
All right, well, I like the idea that it can be used for other projects too as well, so I'm looking forward to seeing the other uses of this, you know, to communicate with the community for issues like this or other issues going forward here. So is that easy to expand and update if we want to add something else for something else?
With a subscription to the program, you basically can set up as many different projects as your subscription provides, so.
So what subscription do we have? What level do we have?
Well, the city doesn't. It's through Freezing Nichols right now, so we can only offer this project through this program for, for the, you know, availability of this project.
But, you know, there are options. We could continue to utilize their services and let them assist us on a project-by-project basis, or the city could look at what this program is or other programs like it that we could expand into. Okay, perfect.
I think after we go through the experience, staff will bring you back kind of a summary of options and how we can address it, and maybe it's just an element we add in the upcoming budget and jump into that subscription service, and I'm sure Mrs. Verisco will be an expert in no time.
We can walk her through it. I'm sure she will.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hall.
Will we have time, the council, to review this before January 10th? Just wouldn't want to, like, have something come up and we start making amendments or something on the, during a council meeting, so.
Don't read it at night, I can guarantee.
So do you want to dive into this? The project website, which is available, and we can provide the link to everyone. It is active, I think, actually, here.
So all the feedback from the open houses in December will be, we'll be able to look at it before the January 10th?
If they, yeah, and, you know, right now, we've told the stakeholders, send it to us by smoke signal, however you want to get it to us, we just want your input, we want your comments, we're welcoming them, and the mayor handed us a great packet today that we're ready to get into. So far, in 60 days, we've had 20 comments, with two of those coming today on the site from the stakeholders, and several of those are replications of each other. But, you know, if people want to come in and talk to me one-on-one or one of the staff members or email them or whatever we need to do, we just want to make sure that we get this document right and it's something that works for everybody.
Well, I can attest that they do, the original one, the one that you got in 1996, I was at Streets at the time, and we looked at that one. Bob came down and gave it to us, a little skinny manual. What do you want us to do with this? He says, build stuff like that. Oh, by the concept. And it worked, because we were in the middle of replacing brick stormwater inlets, and that's what we were doing. Greg and I sat down there and worked that out, and we never built another brick one again, because they, of course, slide off and do stuff. It wasn't the best engineering. That was. And so the idea works. I think that one of the things that happens, most of the comments that I've heard about it and somewhat where I read, the document's a little more technical than if you're, if I'm planning at a crew chief, and I want that crew chief to go down there and build that structure or whatever, can he understand the document to the point that he doesn't? Some of the words are a little more technical than I would have used, but maybe we can put a glossary in it, maybe we can put pictures or something.
Sure, and a lot of the, the EDC is a lot about the design, not the actual construction itself. The construction goes back to those construction drawings in the back, and we're updating those. We're seeing, it's like, yeah, we haven't built, I think our detail actually still shows brick, and we have to X it out every time, or it shows a curve that we don't use anymore, we have to X it out. That's gone. But that's what you'd hand to a crew chief, or you'd hand to your contractor in the field and say, this is how we want it built, not the big section in the front that the design engineer and the developer are reading to find out, you know, what concrete strength needs to be planned for the thickness and the, you know, the traffic counting and those things. So the real technical part is really more of that design professional in the front end.
Thank you. Oh, Councilmember.
So I was just curious, I did kind of glance through this document that the mayor provided us, and I was curious, can you speak into a little bit more detail about fee in lieu of detention? It says that that's still available in our, in our plan.
Absolutely.
Why would we allow fees in lieu of detention?
So our current EDC has a misrepresentation in it on fee in lieu of detention. We currently allow it, and it says in the upper reach of the watershed. That's exactly backwards. It's the lower reach. You don't want to do it in the upper reach. It's a really counterintuitive process, but sometimes what you're doing is you're letting that water get out of the way before the water upstream gets there. So you're not adding that to the flow, you're letting it be bypassed, you're letting it go, and it's already gone and downstream, and it's somewhere in Purcell, when the water from upstream is just now getting to that point. But we only allow it at the very base of the total watershed, so right along the Canadian River. Most of those areas are already pretty well-built out, or maybe right at the Little River, but even the Little River gets more complicated because it goes to, like, Thunderbird. So it's not used and it's not requested very often, to be honest.
Are you saying that currently it's set up to where it's only down by the Canadian River?
We've got, the way that it currently reads is that we'd only allow it in the upper part of the watershed. It should be lower part, and that's how we apply it, and it's only been requested a couple of times in my time here.
I thought, am I wrong in saying that the Eagle Cliff addition requested that?
They did. They did. They initially requested that. Staff supported that request. It makes sense because that water would now be out of the creek. That water's not in the creek, mixing with that additional water coming down. Like I said, it's totally counterintuitive. It sometimes doesn't make sense, but they came back and actually said that they would choose to detain, and they actually came back and proposed detention, and we accepted that also.
So you're saying that there are times when not having detention is beneficial?
It can be, yes. And that's, and that's shown by the drainage analysis that's done, and that's included in here. We tell them how to do that drainage analysis so that we can make that determination in coordination with the developer and their engineer.
And so is it true that in our current document that you've rewritten here, that it's still going to be allowed but will require council approval? Is that correct? Fee in lieu of detention?
You'd have to let me read that section again. I don't have it all committed to memory yet, so.
But yeah, it always will. You review every preliminary plan, every final plan, and fee in lieu of detention is just like the streets and waterlines and sewerlines that you are approving with that plan.
Okay.
And, Mayor, one of the other advantages to fee in lieu, and every city I've worked for has had a fee in lieu of detention, a design criteria, and the theory is that it's a waste of money, just for the developer to spend that money on a detention basin that does no good. It's a waste of money. So instead of doing that, they give that same amount of money to the city. So instead of doing that, they give that same amount of money to the city. And we then aggregate that with other similar fees and we build something that makes more sense, like a regional detention basin. Or some other system that really will help flooding and stormwater rather than the waste of money that would go into.
How many have we built so far as a city?
I don't think we have, I think we may have cashed a fee in Imhoff Creek one time for a creek improvement, but I don't think we've done any regional detention. And again, regional detention is a challenge because you have to have the land, but we're always looking for that opportunity. And it's a really great policy. You'll find most of the first five cities that do it. But Scott's right, it's very rare, it's always at the bottom of the watershed, and there's not a lot of developments at the bottom of the watershed. It's the last thing to develop.
And if it was proposed, you would see that in the staff report. That would be an item that would be listed in the staff report so that you would be aware of it as a council.
All right, thank you.
So the last thing I wanted to show, the last thing we've got here before discussion, just the project website, which you all have the URL to and can go to that. We'll make sure that in the coming days, it's also linked to your city site so that it's a little bit more broadly available. The Get Involved tab at the top is key to seeing and participating in the comments section of the project. But there are also tabs for just home, which is kind of an overview of the project. The documents I mentioned, that's the existing documents that have been reviewed as well as the draft documents being proposed. A way to contact and just who's involved with the project. So, all of those tabs are there. This is where you go, what you get to when you get to the Share Your Ideas option within the website. And there are six different tabs, or what we call markers, for the different topic areas of the engineering design criteria. So if your comment is about sanitary sewer, then, you know, you click on this orange arrows and then provide your feedback. It's a great way for people to throw their comments out there and for others to be able to see what people are talking about. They can either like or dislike comments. There's not a lot of crosstalk permitted between the different commenters, but you can like or dislike a comment from someone else and then provide your own. So, there's enough flexibility to allow people some opportunities to provide their feedback without, you know, kind of getting into a debate with somebody.
We're in Norman, it's gonna happen.
It might happen in a different platform or, we'll see how they do. The idea was for it not to become kind of the Facebook comment section.
Yes.
It's a theory. After we get back to you in January and you have an opportunity to see what feedback we've received, the feedback that will be on the website will be available for everyone to see. If we receive other email or phone calls or other types of comments from anybody in the community, we'll develop basically a comment log so that you guys will have access to that and can see what people told us, asked us, and what their response was as you go into a deliberation to consider adopting this material. And then, of course, next steps.
Councilmember Holman? Peacock, I'm sorry.
Have you finished with your presentation? I didn't want to interrupt you.
Yeah, I'll just jump right there.
Great, thank you, I feel better. So I appreciate, you know, these comments here. I haven't had a chance to dig into them either, but I just wanted to get the general sense of what has been the reception from the development community so far? Has it been positive generally? Or are there any major sticking points that we kind of need to be aware of?
We haven't, like I said, we've only had about 20 comments made so far. One maybe had three or four comments in it. We're working through those so far and those, we don't see anything that's insurmountable. Many we've read and gone, no, we agree with that. Or, oh, no, that was pre-existing. So, you know, there's a mixed bag. Nothing so far has been something that I would consider a big sticking point. I got this document along with you tonight, so I haven't had a chance to go through it either. We will be spending the next few days going through it, figuring out what's there. But we're just anxious to get comments and move this forward.
Well, I mean, having worked in this industry, I mean, I think the mayor's comments about being, making it easily accessible and easy to interpret are pretty spot on. We get a reputation here in Norman about difficult to do business. And so anything we can do to squash that or quell that, I think, is a positive in my book. So just a few particulars on this while we were talking about it. You mentioned parking, that we had looked at maybe doing the parking minimums or addressing those? Because I know when we abolished the required parking, we kind of pushed pause on actually adjusting those numbers because we were waiting for this process to play out. Was that looked at at all?
So that is basically on private property. This really deals with public infrastructure. So that's not, this doesn't deal with a parking lot for a business. Now, if it goes through an on-street parking, that's where we would work with our Transportation Division and work closely with what parking we could get if it was a street that was acceptable to have parking. Or if it's in our downtown area and Center City Form Based Code where we have that. But that parking is going to a lot go back to that, those zoning regulations. But this can certainly, I think this will play a part and be something that we can add to that.
Okay. So in terms of the private parking, if we want to adjust that ordinance, we need to do it as a council and not through this process?
It'll still be part of your zoning regulations and addressed through amendments to that. We did provide a little bit of guidance on using the green stormwater techniques as an incentive for parking reduction, but again, it kind of depends on what direction you want to go because you have the, you've eliminated the minimums, made them recommendations. And so you've, what you want to do is make sure that, you know, what you are making easiest thing to do is the outcome that you want. And you may have already done that, so.
Well, and I mean, I think we've made a step in that direction by making the recommendations now, but I still feel like those recommendations are pretty bloated and can use some throttling down. So I mean, I don't know who, Jane, if we want to take a look at that at some point in the future, but I'd still, I think that's a big priority.
I think we did address the backend angled parking.
Yeah.
Which is a new.
Yeah, we added the reverse angled parking, which wasn't an option really before.
That was one of my questions, so I'm glad to be here today. In terms of the low-impact development, you mentioned pervious paving. Do we have a standard detail that comes with that now or is that a guideline?
It's really hard to do a standard detail for that. It's more of a guide. Because it's really site-dependent. How much water do you need to be able to store? Watch your time of latency, how long do you need to hold it? So you can't just say, put in 24 inches of type A, you know, type 57 rock and six inches of, and the other thing is you get changes. Are you going to use a paver? Are you going to use concrete? Are you going to use asphalt?
Right.
So that's really a site design and it's designed, it takes a lot of specific design from the engineer. And we address how to accomplish that design with that new Section 7000.
Perfect, because I know I've gotten feedback from you guys and staff has had some issues with those in the past and there's not a very level of consistency between the two. So providing some guidance, I think, will.
And that's always a tough one. And those all come to me for final approval and I try to be very consistent, but it, like I said, it varies so much because it's just so soil-dependent and your water and your, there's just too many variables to make it.
Is that something that's in the guidelines, requiring a percolation test of the soil or anything like that?
Did we go to? I would have to reread it. By the way, this is the two documents printed front and back, so they're little bitty, easy-to-read quickies. They're pamphlets.
Sure, I understand how to ask questions.
I did read that. I read it all in detail. I remember when I read through that section, I was very impressed with the recommendations and the design guidelines that were given. And I was expecting to have some, no, I don't want that in there. And I read it and went, oh, wow, this is good stuff.
That's all I needed to hear.
But I can't remember in that detail. I'd have to go back and look. We can certainly look at that and see if that's in there. I would prefer it personally.
I mean, I think that obviously, again, dictates the kind of solution you put in if you've got.
There are soil characteristics. I just can't remember if it was site or if it's based on soil survey. I prefer site characteristics because you never know what's really at that level or what's been filled in that area.
And just a couple more, I'm sorry, this is kind of an area for me. Complete streets, do you guys have a standard detail on that that you could show us tonight? Or, I know that changes, again, based on.
A complete street is not a detail. A complete street is an idea and a concept. But if you look at every one of our designs, it is a complete street. So while we don't have a complete street detail, all of our details will show you how to construct a complete street. And we've been doing that since I've been here. So, we're just being a little more direct about it and including a complete street guidance document to encourage that even more.
Because I know we've talked in the past about the city of Moore requires a 10-foot-wide sidewalk be built with every new road. And I just didn't know if we had taken that same level of detail in terms of our complete street.
Right, and we're going back and basically it's what's written in our CTP right now.
Will all these standards be provided in a CAD format at the end of this?
Yes, they'll be able to be brought in and be put into your, right now they do that, they bring them, they set them in, they put six of them on a sheet, standard details.
Absolutely. Just trying to make things easier again.
Absolutely.
And the last thing, did you guys look at minimum lot sizes in terms of the residential or subdivision regulations? Because I know that's always.
We did not with this because that goes more into the subdivision regulations than it does the detail on how to construct the streets, the water. So we did not actually address that directly here, but that's something that we can continue to look at.
And Jane, in terms of comprehensive land use plan update, is that a thing where we would look at minimum lot sizes on the residential side? Is it an opportunity to have that as a process?
It would depend on how much development, how much density we wanted to bring into an area.
That's why I ask. We're trying to promote density. I think that our minimum lot sizes are not working in our favor in that regard.
We'll make sure we address that in that process.
Appreciate you. Thank you, guys.
Absolutely. Councilmember Shuler?
I was just curious if there was something that we could share on social media, asking for input? Is there a release somewhere?
We'll work, we're going to be working with Tiffany Vursko on that. And there'll be something coming out tomorrow. And we can make sure that gets shared. And she'll be doing it as the way she's standard, but put that out. But we absolutely want to get that out there. We'll also have it up on the city website. We're going to work with her and let her do her magic. That's her specialty, not mine. But we'll be working very, we've already been in contact with her. I've had several emails back and forth today. The reason we're not going to, we wanted to come to council before we put it out there publicly. So we put it till tomorrow. And Dawn's going to be doing a video that will be up there if somebody needs a little bit of help and discussion with it. And we want to get that up there before we actually put this out publicly. So tomorrow, late in the day, there should be something starting to come out about this opportunity.
Great, thank you.
And whatever goes out, I'm sure that you all should be able to pick it up and share it with your social media networks. So however broadly you can share that information is appreciated because that helps to get people to the community meetings.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Schuler?
So, I'm slightly concerned about the timeline. We are in holiday season. And to Councilmember Holman's point earlier about, like, when are we going to be able to review a final document? Like, we've held both of those up, they're pretty lengthy and fairly technical. And so, do we think that it's enough time for public feedback, final review, and council review to actually get it on January 10th? Where we feel comfortable with what's being presented?
Music to my ears to hear, I think, if that's the date set, these people will work mightily to achieve it. And, you know, sometimes going fast isn't always better. And I would be very comfortable, very comfortable, especially with the volume and the technical aspects of it. If it were the second meeting in January or even the first meeting in February, a little more time is not a bad thing.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're getting, and we, obviously this will be monitored, but like, that we're getting enough of, like, a robust feedback from the community during that process where, you know, we're getting, where the, you know, online thing is open. Because I have a feeling that many people are checked out from stuff right now and it'll gear back up in January as it typically does. So I just want to make sure that we're getting enough time to get feedback from residents.
Can we say tentatively, first meeting in February? If that, I don't disagree with.
It feels a little bit better to me. I don't know how others kind of feel about it. I just, it's just, it's a large document and a lot of things to look at and kind of feedback. But, and then I had one final, I guess, question about the timeline as it relates to kind of our upcoming land use and other plans. Does it make sense that this comes first in that process? Like, how do those interface and do they at all?
We'll have, we'll be talking about our sewer master plan and our water master plan and our circulation element. I think timing-wise, to have this design criteria available to plug into that process, it will ensure we do not duplicate this particular effort. So I think the timing is really, really good.
Okay. There was one final thing that I was thinking about, but, yeah, okay. Just making sure that everything is kind of working in conjunction. And when will we start? I know that we've got to bring names forward for that process and Strong Towns and, like, we've got a whole bunch of things that will kind of layer off of this. So what is the timeline for those pieces?
Mrs. Hudson?
We've got our Semel to do this week. We'll start distributing those to our review committee. That's two citizens on there as well. And the goal that was in the RFP is to have everything in front of you, the contract, by the first of February. Hopefully, so we'll see.
So even delaying this a little bit won't put any of that timeline in jeopardy? Okay, perfect. Awesome.
Mr. Mayor, I have to share my level of disappointment with Mr. Sturts for not taking the opportunity in this presentation to sneak in baby pictures of a new grandbaby?
Oh.
That I heard yesterday, if I'm not mistaken.